The board is now in session. Good evening. First item on the agenda is a vote to appoint Public Works Planning Board member or members. There's a current member whose term is expiring. I'd like to ask the board if we looked on the, earlier today, 10 minutes ago, we looked on the website and found no information relative to this opening. So it's a procedural question. If the board could help us and advise whether we should proceed with the appointment of the only name that we have, or if it's felt that it should be posted as a vacancy and allow people to submit before we appoint. Now, it's a procedural question, and if the board decides to appoint tonight, that's fine. If the board decides to put this off for two weeks until we receive some guidance relative to advertising the opening, that's fine too, because we meet in two weeks. And we've checked the website and couldn't find any indication that a meeting of that Public Works Board has a pending meeting. So it appears to be not that time-sensitive, at least relative to the next two weeks. So I'll open up to the board. I want to go down through the board. And feel free to ask questions or just render your opinion as to whether or not we should appoint tonight, or check into whether or not we're acting procedurally correctly. Mr. Mills?
So this is not a reappointment? This is a...
No, it's a reappointment.
So I know last time, I think it was Mr. Cyrus came forward and applied, and we were in the same situation. So, and I advocated that we wait, not because he wasn't qualified or anything, but just for the exact reason you mentioned. Get some advertising, see if there are other candidates or people that are interested in the spot. So I would be in favor of waiting until the next meeting to see if there is any additional interest. Not that the candidate who's applied is not qualified, but just, like you said, to make sure it's advertised and there's a fair shake for anyone who might be interested.
Mrs. Mills?
So this is one of two positions on this board that the planning board appoints. And this is a very important time in our town with the Main Street construction and a number of other initiatives. So I feel like we should do our best to make it public that there is an opportunity to serve on the board, and I think we should give it a couple of weeks to see if we can get more applicants.
Mrs. Luttrell?
I agree with Mr. Mills and Mr. Stein. I think that's a great plan to take.
Mrs. Hulley?
That makes it consensus. I agree with everybody.
I want to make it clear that this has absolutely nothing to do with a candidate or candidates. It has to do with procedure. And just to make sure that, you know, we just act properly within the rules to reappoint, which we may do anyways, but since it's not that time-sensitive, I just want to make sure that the board is acting procedurally correct. And again, it has nothing to do with any candidate or candidates. Okay, so having gone over that, we'll put that one on our next agenda to, after we receive some guidance, to appoint a Public Works Planning Board member. Next item is a vote to appoint the new Recreation Director to the Master Plan Committee.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we appoint Timothy Davis to the Master Plan Committee immediately.
Second for discussion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion?
So in light of how we handled the previous appointment on tonight's agenda, I just am curious, are there other candidates? Is there, you know, what is the, what is the reasoning we wouldn't delay that appointment?
Go ahead, Mr. Mills.
Since Torian Ferguson resigned, this would be something that's part of taking the position of Recreation Director from the Master Plan. So it's kind of held specifically for that individual who has that role. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor? Five to zero.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we appoint Michael Robbins as the ZBA rep to the Master Plan Committee. As, just as possible.
Second for discussion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion?
So Mr. Mills, is this a similar situation where we have a vacancy related to a specific board or committee?
Mr. Dinkton, he's no longer on the ZBA, and Michael Robbins will be taking that ZBA spot.
Great. Thank you for clarifying.
The ZBA, the ZBA did vote to have him represented on the committee.
Despite the controversial person. Kidding, it's my next door neighbor. He's watching. Oh, he can't be watching. So motions are made and seconded. Any more discussion? All in favor? Five to zero. Congratulations. Okay, that takes care of the appointments for this part of the agenda. Next item on the agenda is a continued public hearing, 325 Turnpike Road, modification of major site plan approval. This is continued from June 3, 2019. Mr. Doherty?
Mr. Chairman?
Welcome back. Grab your microphone.
Yeah. I'm all sided.
Tell us, the agenda item does not indicate this as Kent's, so could you give us just the top few and then why you're here?
Most certainly. You may, board may remember that your modifications to the site plan, Kent's Foods at 325 Turnpike Road, which involved closing down loading docks along the north edge of the building, and taking out other pavements, and turning them to landscape. Also, some widening of the driveway just outside the truck depot area. And it ended up in a net increase in open space and landscaped area. When I was here last, in June, a discussion started regarding the ability to plant these disturbed areas with native species. And at that time, it was uncertain. I had thought the area had been ceded and was under, starting to germinate already. In fact, that was the case. However, we were able to, we realized that the stockpile area, the east of the building, the circle that read on the plan that I brought tonight, which is approximately the same size of the area that had been disturbed with the changes subject of this modification supplemental, is the one area left that needs to be stabilized. And we have an opportunity there to plant it with native grass and flowering species. And in fact, it brought this issue up to the folks at Kent's Foods, and it sounded great to them. So we're able to, we're able to take care of that. I think we're very happy about that. And at Kent's Foods is also that we're able to be on the, some of the start, so to speak, of this increased effort for native plantings here in Southborough. It's a large enough area that can be pointed to and discussed and observed over time. But that's the basics, Mr. Chairman.
That's the, and so the board sees what you're doing, or we have the materials relative to what you're going to plant?
The planting is, is the native wildflower flower mix from the wetlands, wetland nurseries of Massachusetts.
Is that in writing to the board?
It is not in the letter that I had submitted. I can add that to the record. I could actually do it in handwriting this evening. That would be fine. If not, it'd be an email.
And...
I've had this discussion with the Open Space Chairman, Freddie, and I talked about this prior to the meeting.
We just want a written record of what is planted and where. So is that, and then the end result of this would be a vote tonight to modify the site plan again to include this?
That would be, that would be fine. Thank you.
Is that, that's why we're here tonight? Very good. Thank you. Open it up to the board, or do you want to go first, Freddie? Why don't we let you go first?
Thank you. I've had several conversations with Scott, and the Open Space Preservation Commission, we met tonight, I mean, this morning. I want to be honest with you. Met this morning and discussed this, and we find this to be a very good solution. The, a couple of questions we have were before this was proposed, or had had some discussion that Kent's would write a letter stating that any future disturbed area would be planted with native plants. And if they, the board and Kent's were willing, we think that would also be a good idea for future modifications or changes to the property to acknowledge that. Although, they have no intention of making any future changes. We know how things change. And the other thing is on the, you know, we'd like the letter to state like what size area that's a, I've been told it's going to be close to half an acre, and you can tell that it's really a red circle on the plan. We'd like that a little bit more formed up. As well as New England Wetland Plants, we're familiar with them. They're a company that does good seed mixes, and you know, New England only, they're native. But they have several wildflower mixes, and we would prefer, I just lost it, but it's a New England Showy wildflower mix. They have a straight wildflower mix, but the Showy would be especially in this situation, which is more of a display view for, even if it's not viewed by many, it would, it would have more bang for your buck. It is a little more buck for your bang, but it's not extraordinarily expensive for this size of a plant. It's not, you know, 100 acres. So we recommend that they use the name Showy.
How do you spell the Showy?
Well, I, I lost it on the website. I'm spelling it S-H-O-W-Y.
Okay.
If I spell it, please be desired.
Familiar with that.
But we would say...
That's not a homie. That's a homie and a selector, isn't it? But that's fine.
I think it's the difference of $10 upon.
Yeah.
We would like to state though, we thought this was a very, very positive recommendation of, you know, agreement on their part. Very happy with that.
Well, thank you. Open up to the board. Mrs. Hulley?
No comment.
Mrs. Luttrell?
So the stockpile area is roughly the same size as the pavement that was...
It is. What's out, that's correct. What's outlined there is the, an approximate area of what was indicated as stockpile area. I think the area a little bit, sort of soil had been disturbed a little bit, where it's a little bit larger than that. So, because they had trucks running around it to take soil away to and fro, so we might get a little more out of that than what I've got shown there. Though I think, for me to measure it exactly, I think I'm going to stick with the area that was delineated as the stockpile area, just because I don't want to overpromise, and I know what I've done to deliver on that. But it's about, it's about that scene, the area of 26, 23, 26,000 square feet.
And so the, so those plans were changed to show that, or?
This is a recent development, right on, what, last week, when I was able to get the decision makers at Kent's Foods on this. So we haven't prepared, was able to make, get the commitment, make the commitment, show the area to the board, and certainly we'll solidify that in writing, in a more definitive plan, in a red circle on that.
Okay.
I think that we'd be, we'd welcome or be willing to have that as a condition of the approval, that we provide that, that plan.
Very good. Thank you.
Mr. Stein?
No questions?
Mr. Mills?
I'd just like to thank you and your client for accommodating the request, and being open to the new advances and where we're looking to go as a town for changing or supporting wildlife community, still being able to accommodate the needs of the businesses. So thank you.
Thank you.
So I have an email here from the Town Planner, dated June 28th, to Mr. Doherty. And it says, you know, "Planning Board Public Hearing on June 3rd," which is where we were the last time. "For your application for modification to major site plan approval, the Planning Board asks for you to provide a letter indicating a stronger commitment to planting native species regarding the landscaping/green area on the north side of the building where the loading dock and concrete pad were removed. Please provide us with your response to that request by Monday, July 1st, seven days prior to the continuing public hearing scheduled for July 8th, as required." So you responded to that part of the email, saying that you're happy to Kent's Foods. We'll establish a native wildflower planting in that where the stockpile was, and, which is subject to the modification filing that had already been ceded and established with law since I was before the board last month. I look forward to presenting this to the Planning Board next week. So the record will show that you did not properly do your homework, and now you have to give us in writing a letter or email that'll describe this, you know, that it's the Showy mix, and that you'll comply with our request to, better than a red line...
Sure.
...on, you know, an engineered drawing that will show the area. And then the second part was, you may want, so you'll do that, Scott?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. "You may want to mention the intent to use blue LED lights when lights are replaced." Are you familiar with that request?
That was a, I think, the cooler, the cooler call, yes. And that, that's, that's fine with Kent's Foods, yes.
So in your June 28th email, the Town Planner referred to some missing documents in the electronic set, which I'm not sure if you've...
That had been taken care of, yes.
And then, "The draft decision for the modification will likely include the following conditions of approval. Please review," and there's nine of them. So number four says, "Blue LED light shall be used when lights are replaced on the following, on the allowed lighting for the development." That'll have to be reworded a little bit. So I think we can handle, and then, you know, there's eight other draft conditions for the modification approval. I would suggest that between now and two weeks from now, all this gets cleared up. You don't have to come. Submit it to the...
Yeah, I'll get it all snapped and worn or...
Yeah, and the supplemental, so that the Town Planner can come to our next meeting and say, "It's all taken care of. Please vote." And we will vote. I don't think it's appropriate for us to vote and to close the public hearing and vote with these materials not available to the public.
Okay.
I'm sure the board, and I'll listen if they disagree, but would trust you during the 20-day appeal period if we were to vote tonight. It has to do, again, with the procedure, that you're going to be submitting additional materials. And it looks like there'll be at least one revision to the draft conditions that the public should have a right to look at and comment on.
Sure do.
So I would, and it sounds like with your approval, we would continue the public hearing until our next...
That would be fine.
But you don't, if you do all your homework, you won't have to come. Open up to the board. Any questions or comments on that format?
My only comment is, but the next meeting, unfortunately, I haven't got it, so, because you've come back possibly, I'm going to be out of town.
Anyone else? What's the date of our next meeting?
26.
26?
26. The Open Space Preservation Commission would recommend that the decision state a number of the K that Dr. Hyman recommended for the, there's a range of...
You'll see, you'll see it if you stay around. You'll see our next presentation has a number associated with the outside lighting, and I think it's 3,000, Mr. Cox? Yeah.
So if this one, but for this one, if they would commit to a number, not just, not limited, would be acceptable.
So the number that I think would be acceptable to commit to would be the 3,000 or less. Technology keeps changing, so. The next public hearing materials have that in, in writing as part of this, if not?
You'll stick around and watch it.
Anyone else on the board? Mr. Mills?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we continue the public hearing for 325 Turnpike Road modification of major site plan approval to July 22nd at 7:00 p.m.
Second?
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? We'll see you in two weeks. We won't see you in two weeks if you do your homework.
You too.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, board.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a continued public hearing, 118 and 120 Turnpike Road will give the applicant a minute or two to set up. Mr. Mills?
Motion for a two-minute recess.
Second?
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? You're in all in favor. We'll see you in two minutes. Planning Board's back in session after two-minute recess. Just before we recessed, we made a motion to continue the public hearing for 325 Turnpike Road. Although we did it out of sequence, we need to extend the approval period for the modification beyond July 13th, which is the current date. So, Mr. Mills?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we extend the approval period for 325 Turnpike Road modification of major site plan approval to July 22nd.
Second?
Approval period to?
July 22nd, 2019.
That's the total of hearings?
26, sorry, 26.
Your motion again?
I make a motion that we extend the approval period for 325 Turnpike Road modification of major site plan approval to July 26th.
Close of business?
Close of business.
Second?
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All set with that? Mr. Doherty?
Yes, that's, that's fine with Kent's Foods.
Very good.
Extend that decision.
To extend that decision date.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, we've approved, we've approved the extended approval period. Now we're allowed to continue the public hearing. Mr. Mills?
Mr. Chairman, I extend, make a motion we extend the public hearing for 325 Turnpike Road modification of major site plan approval to July 22 at 7:00 P.M.
Second.
Motion's been made, seconded, and in discussion? All in favor? We'll maybe see you on the 22nd.
That's, thank you. We'll see information from you prior to that.
Take action at that time. Thank you.
Thank you.
For coming back. Okay, uh, the next item on the agenda, as we said before the break, is a continued public hearing for 118, 120 Turnpike Road, major site plan approval. And another continued public hearing, 118, 120 Turnpike Road, special permit lower impacted on. This, uh, these public hearings are continued from June 3rd, 2019. Good evening, gentlemen. Welcome back.
Good evening.
Mr. Cox, introduce yourself and who you represent and your, uh, your engineer, please.
Steven Cox, I'm representative, I'm the manager of the architecture department to do for both the 118 and 120. And after that, we're the manager. Uh, Vito, I want to represent us as structural and engineering has since we purchased the units in 2013. Mr. Chairman and Board, so we're back. We, uh, I hope, uh, responded to all of the key questions that the board raised back in June 3rd. Also, we have just received the Fussin' O'Neil report that even, so Fussin' O'Neil had various items that they wanted clarified and/or added. We have responded to that report and in full. And so I thought if, uh, if it would be useful, that we would just go down our response to Fussin' O'Neil. And then I want to highlight landscaping and I want to highlight lighting. And we go, so we've got some additional renderings done to respond to those two comments. Maybe those will respond to any other that the board will have to go through.
Quick question, very quick.
Mr. Stan?
Has Fussin' O'Neil seen your responses?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have anything from that?
I don't think we've seen anything, but we've responded.
Okay, that's all, thanks.
You ready?
Sure. All right.
Bring the mic, go.
Okay, one of the others out.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll just start right off top with comment number one. It's just related to, uh, the project does require a special permit through ZBA. Uh, we have filed that application with ZBA, but we haven't had the public hearing to date. We've actually met.
Public hearing is scheduled for the 21st of August.
Yep.
21st of August.
Yeah. I've seen that on this.
Yep, yeah, the scheduling kind of was elongated. Submitted, but it was a few weeks before the hearing. I don't know if they have one this month or not. But anyway, it's in August. Is it? Okay. Uh, item two was just related to confirming the building height. Um, we submitted as part of the specification package, the architectural rendering that just confirms that height at 45 feet, which is the maximum, uh, in this area. And the three was related to the amount of earthwork on site and the cuts and fills and tree removal. So, I know we brought this up last time, and so we did take a look at that, and that work is right in here. Um, I think in the package, I kind of submitted a picture, just kind of showing that area, so you have reference to it. A lot of the area is actually a banked slope that was cut in when they did the parking lot here. Uh, so you're not really working into this natural slope in the back. Uh, it kind of goes up right now, and then there's a berm, it goes down as a swell. We're only working up to that berm point. We're not even, we're not going past the swell. That swill is constructed right back here and maintaining that. There are a number of trees that do get removed as part of the work, though, because after they built the parking lot, this grew up as emerging growth. It was all small pines. They grew up very tight together. A lot of them are healthy right now, actually. But we did take a count of them, I think it's 63 trees in total get removed, and they're between about 10 to 14-inch trees. And they're, I guess, very tightly spaced. Um, but we did look at the replacement plan, and there are 69 trees getting replaced as part of this project. So there is a net gain in the end after all the, through that.
To that point, we did a revised drawing here that maybe could help a little bit. So the trees in dark gray, it's difficult to see, but the trees in dark gray are these ones that are all bunched up that are being removed. The trees in green are all moved, as well as these tall screener trees, they're 14-foot tall in the front, which the creeker's standing on. Shells. And then to Vito's point about the cut and fill, we have, I want, I want you to see this. Um, we asked the architects to do a section as if we were in the middle of, in the middle of the ramp. And, and this is existing and will remain existing. So what we wanted to show is that this hill, as it goes up, and the trees either replaced or remaining form a, uh, complete screen of this ramp from, from the park, which is the best additional parkway. And we would look at more of the screening of the front that we're here. So yes, we do excavate, I guess you'd call it, 21,000 feet, when you know shoulder. But some of it, if we walked in, like I walked in tonight, again, it's just scrubs and things. There are bigger pine trees there that are not too healthy, but they're there. So those will be removed and the trees will be replaced and like, or added to the, I guess, spot. But I think the most interesting is the natural screen that occurs, just because then the developers should have known.
The, the other part of that question was related to groundwater and erosion controls during construction. So as part of those garage design, um, we've included subdrainage, probably architectural, architectural package once they go into construction. But there will be subdrainage along this edge and actually under the slab also, so that'll address that as a post-development concern as far as the structural components of the garage. And then during construction, we do have erosion controls throughout the site. There, we'll show on the site, there's a special erosion control plan. It goes along with that. And actually, a lot of times your concern, too, is surface runoff that comes down and roads over the top of it. This swell that's along the top here prevents any runoff from the upgrading areas from actually getting into the construction site. So that hot slope right there, you'll only get water that falls on it. It doesn't get any upgrading areas that'll come through. That's usually a problem when you have large areas of, of washout. So it's really protected by that existing soil, sort of, but. Uh, let's see. Number four was related to more kind of labeling and just showing where the pedestrian doors are and handicap ramps. So we labeled where the doors are, there's one here, pedestrian door, and one right here. And both of them have accessible ramps running down, and this one goes to a crosswalk, and this one leads out into the parking area right here. Uh, this would be kind of your main use area, this door, that's where the elevator would be. And so this one actually has a pretty good sized ramp to run down, and it needs to, it's on the backside of the building. And item five was related to parking spaces being dimensioned inside the garage and the updated architectural plans, just sort of typical dimensional nature in zone. And indicate the mounting height of the light fixtures, and the updated lighting plan provided a schematic of the different light fixtures that could be utilized on the site. Item seven was, uh, the site lighting, just a, the site lighting plan originally that was prepared only included what was proposed on top of the garage. They asked that we include all of the site lighting that's existing to remain plus the new stuff. So they did update that just to confirm there wouldn't be any light trespass onto the property. And we also did include some specifications on the, uh, on the warm fill lights, as we discussed last time. These would be, they've all been specified as 3,000 K, uh, and one LED lights.
Hold on a second, Mr. Mills. Scott, did you want to inspect?
No, no, thank you, Mr. Chairman. No.
You got enough?
Yes, I do, yeah. I just wanted to make sure I understood the context and all the details.
So you're, again, back to Kent Foods. The, the answer to my question is that Kent Foods is all set with that. Um, but, um, this project may be in first place for installing. We'll see who comes in first. You're back on, Lee.
All right. So the, uh, the other topic that wasn't in the Fussin' O'Neil letter, but they brought up was the lighting at nighttime and the need for security lighting, but also the need for it to be shut down at night. So we did bear an agreement that we would do motion sensors on the lights for the ramp. So as you enter, the light up for a certain amount of time, they would come off, and see that both security and, you know, you do slide on. They just asked that a landscaping and planting schedule be provided, and that was provided prior to this package. And we'll get into more detail after. And this was a question, um, kind of the board that they had brought up. Was it that a 10-foot landscape buffer is required alongside the rear, on the side of your property lines? So their question was on this property line. Right now, the existing pavement is about two feet off the property line. So we did taper it back, so in the back there, we have a 20-foot separation, but we have to meet the existing pavement here. So we really didn't have a choice but to go into that 10-foot section. We did pull it as far back as possible, but we do have to meet the existing condition over this point. So they just wa, asked whether, um, that should be provided, whether, uh, whether it couldn't be provided. And then number 10 was shade trees, uh, were in the existing parking lot, were in here, and they were just asking, you know, if the landscaping plan should show replacement of those. So that landscaping plan did. Did provide that. With the replacement, uh, and actually increasing those shade trees were not part of it. Item 11 was a topic of the waiver for the LID components, uh, related to roof gardens and rain barrels. And they had concur with us that, you know, it wasn't practical for this type of an application for those components on the site. And then, number 12 is just to record the decision after anything's granted, which would be done. 13 is the requirement for an ASVIL plan at completion. 14, they had discussed the, uh, treated or untreated discharge towards welllands. And they had commented that this catch basin right here wasn't accounted for in calculation. This one right here, now with the revised grading and everything, the actual catches, uh, about 800 square feet, so it's about this little small area. So we did a weighted average calculation, uh, to factor it into this whole, uh, to the water quality volume and flow calculations. So we still meet the requirements of what from 83% treatment to 82% treatment. So it didn't really affect, uh, the end result, just because of the small, here, and Jerry, that goes there. And then they asked, too, whether or not we do under slab drainage and treatment, but we don't believe it does since it's clean groundwater. Uh, it wouldn't require treatment. Um, they asked for, number 15 was the table that we usually add, well, lot area, area of welllands, just to, to record that on the plans. We have it down on the cover sheet. It's the same as number 16. We, uh, list off the existing proposed impervious cover, open space, undisturbed open space. So we have a typical table that we add, uh, that has all the information on that. Comment number 17 was, the one item in the regulation requires one-foot contours. Uh, we typically use two-foot contours, especially on a site like this, with the, there are a lot of topography out there. Um, they agree that the one, uh, two-foot adequately shows, uh, the work. They did also question whether we were on vertical datum, had the benchmarks. So we had our benchmark, there's one here, and there's one on a hybrid over here. We are on an assumed datum. Um, typically, we would be on either 29 or 88 for USGS vertical datum. We are on an assumed datum. Um, you could do a conversion for that. Um, it would be a significant amount of work to change every, run the plan over to that. Um, there's a benefit to having that done. Usually, there's only, you have flood plain nearby, you want to make sure you're out of that, but there isn't anything left out of the site that a datum would necessarily be needed for. 18 is the water balance calculation. Typically, we just address that on the standard three of the groundwater recharge. Uh, the water balance was something we used to do before. They have the stormwater standards, and now it's all addressed under that one recharge standard. 19 was an emergency response plan, and we included that into the O and M plan. 20 was just a comment on, in the narrative. Backing here, there's a little area of buffer disturbance right there. And, you know, we had noted in the narrative, and we didn't include the area in there, so we updated that. So the buffer disturbance went from 11,200 to 13,400. And we had already discussed that in the last conservation hearing. Number 21 was the water quality flow calculations for the treatment structure. And they just questioned what, what areas were going to that and what was being treated. It would be this whole top deck area and then the flow to these three new catch bases. So basically, all this and all, uh, top ten, so everything did, uh, would go through that treatment structure. And there's also another treatment structure right here, they noted in this, but that was put in two years ago, maybe?
Uh, two years ago, yeah.
Two years ago, when they redid this parking area, um, they put another one here. So basically, everything now on this whole side gets treated prior to discharge. Uh, and, you know, prior to two years ago, none of it had any treatment at all. So it's quite an improvement in that. And 22 was just, uh, adding some text into the stormwater pollution prevention plan, so that is provided in there. 23 was some edits to the O and M plan. We had a reference to a forbey, uh, so we took that out since there was no on the plan. And we added a location map and procedures for the previous papers during the patio area. 24, we updated the stormwater checklist. There was one of the boxes that weren't checked. We asked if it was done. 25 was just to verify the drawdown calculations, uh, to ensure that the previous papers with drawdown within 72 hours of the base beneath them would dry out to pass the next storm. 26, um, that one was, let's see. Uh, we just updated the pipe sizing calculations, uh, to include, we had the slab drainage. We just wanted to verify that that wasn't going to influence, uh, the pipe sizing. So we went through a calculation on the subdrainage flow. We anticipate we'd be going through that. 27 was labeling up the sub drains, uh, just verifying the connection point. We have a connection point here to the existing drain right there. We have eight feet of elevation height there, so we have plenty of room to get the sub drains across and down. 28, uh, there's a question on what happens with the interior decks for drainage. And initially, we weren't fully. And initially, we weren't fully sure, but going through plumbing code and previous designs that have been approved in town, the typical procedure is to go to a tight tank, actually, since there is no sewer on site and can't discharge it to the storm drainage system. So we have a long gas separator prior, and then a tight tank. Number 29 was a typo, it was my fault, and the drainage table. 30 was to add additional settlement barriers. The loading control man basically, we did, we had to stay on this bench too, just in case on that side. And 31 was clarify the intent of the relocated subdrain. I don't know if we've talked about that much at this hearing, but this is more of a conservation item. There was an existing subdrain on the back of this retaining wall up here, and it just dumps out in the parking lot. And this was installed at a time when, I think it was probably dry out, and they didn't think it was really going to flow. Then when the spring came, this started to flow, it's a four-inch pipe, and it flows maybe at half full. It's flowing pretty good.
It was amazing. It was a wonderful skating rink.
Yeah. And so it was, last year, beginning of the year, all winter, it went, and this whole side was, I mean, like...
We had to actually open up, because we couldn't dare have anybody even walk.
So now we're going to take it, cut it off, and bring it down, and bring it through this natural soil, once we're here. What I used to actually, before, if you're, if you're piping down, and you're like, it's getting close here. We had a detail for erosion control blankets on item 32, and we just took the detail off. We do want to leave it on this particular plan. 33, they asked the locations of the ADA parking signs to be shown. So we just showed those all through here, we wanted each space. And then number 34 was just related to the fire department, site plan review memo. The maximum height clearance of 13.6 inches to allow ingress and egress of fire apparatus. So we just confirmed that there's, they have adequate clearance through all streets, driveways to meet that 13.6 clearance.
Questions first? Sure. That's the presentation. Excellent. Excellent. Glad we went through that, a lot of detail. It was commented earlier that we cannot, we had your response to the questions, and now we, you know, we wait for Louis Fasmonia to confirm and agree, or point out areas of disagreement, and see where it takes us. Open it up to the board, Mr. Mills.
Uh, thanks, Phil. Do you need to bless a water or something?
He wasn't ready.
So you answered a lot of my questions. One though that I hadn't, can you go back to the side view of the parking lot?
Sure.
Of the garage? Because I think it was the second one...
Yep, the third comment?
Yeah, that it won't be, no, second one. Won't be more than 45 feet tall. So it looks like the stairwell piece is 45 feet tall. But if you go to the right, am I right in seeing that that lamppost is higher?
Yeah, does the lamppost count on height? So we discussed height with building inspector, and she confirmed us this would be considered height even as a stairwell. It wouldn't be a story. It would be counted towards height. Did not ask about the lamppost.
So that lamppost be on a sensor?
Yes.
It's a whole different, whole ramp, but...
I can find out, I can find out for you if that counts.
Why, do I tell you? My, it could be an old part of the code, but I thought the height of the building, and we have the code here, so we'll check it while we get down the board here. Thought that the height of the building was defined as the average.
Right. So that's what I... Yeah, it would be the average. So actually, it would be less than 45 right now. If it did count towards height, we would just have to do the calculation around to get the average grade. Because we do fill in the back, as you pointed out. So a problem would be in the range of, you know, high 30s instead of actual 45. We just wanted to show that at its worst point, it's 45.
So we can find out if it answers the question.
If it do count.
No? Did you find it?
No.
Oh, I thought you were, the question. All right, I'm sorry, Vito. Yeah, we'll check it. Yes. Good question, Mr. Mills. Please, hold on.
Other than that, I mean, I think, you know, we've talked about the 10-foot buffer for the roadway and everything. Considering the first thing, you know, the land that's going to be given to the town, that's already existing, I'm not concerned about that. The design to make it appear as a parking garage, the architecture looks great. You know, the fact that it's sunk it down, it's not going to be seen from, the open space area and everything is added plus as well. So I have no other questions.
Mr. Stein?
Regarding item number seven, the site garage lighting would be controlled through a motion sensor during non-working hours. What is defined as non-working hours?
The building hours officially in leases, in future leases, are 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Now, we plan to close the ramp after business ends. It's not, we don't want everyone, so there'll be kind of key access to the gateways. But we do know that everyone works later than six. So we were thinking that if you make it eight o'clock hours, eight o'clock at night before the maintenance closes, and there's people in there right now looking.
Closed, except for those with card key access?
That would get out. You are correct. Yeah. And the lights would be on and off depending on the activity.
So hypothetically, at, say, 9, 10 o'clock at night, if somebody stopped by the office to pick somebody up or something like that, then they, they use their card key to enter the garage, does the entire garage illuminate? So what are the, what are, can you be more specific about a motion sensor location?
The way you understand it, and it's a really good question, we understand that the sensors would be per floor. So if we drove in on floor two, for example, those lights would do that.
Okay. I would highly recommend for subsequent meetings on this topic that we have more specific information.
Sure, absolutely.
More specific information about how the motion sensors work, and what gets illuminated and when. For item number nine, sorry, I'll wait to... For item number nine, can we just revisit that for a moment, please? Vito, would you mind stepping to the...
Sure.
So...
So what I believe they're talking about is, on this edge here, typically, there's a 10-foot wide landscape buffer.
So the question that comes to mind is, how did this happen in the first place?
It was probably, you know, they could have gotten a permit to do it, or it was just pre, pre that requirement, pre the landscaping section in the biolot.
Okay.
Because this was built in 83?
Six.
Yeah, two phases, right?
So the pavement comes right up to the property line on that section?
Yeah, right there, let's see if it misses. It's less than two feet of this one, actually. Right there, it's about a foot. Because these were all built as one...
So it just seems kind of aesthetically questionable to me that the landscaping is going to come to a narrowing point that way, and ended pavement on the property line. I'm wondering if there's a better way to mitigate that situation.
Yeah, because if you pull it 10 feet, you could come up, and you'd have a, you know, you could, you just wouldn't have it straight through drive. You'd have a kink in your, kink in your driveway.
But I wonder if we're not better off that way, though?
Well, I mean...
I mean, I'll leave it up to other board members, but to me, having it narrowed to...
If you just pull, we could go over it.
Like a point is not, you know, ideal.
Yeah, we could make it work. Just coming down, you kind of just have to, it wouldn't necessarily be far enough, we make a turn, and it would be another turn in. You know, it wouldn't be enough to make it over and over. But if it's something that you'd like us to try to get to, we could make it work. It's just going to be, here is going to be existing, so right there, it'd still be at the one foot, or two feet, whatever it is. And you could bring it over to get that 10-foot.
Yeah. I'd be curious to hear what other board members think, too. Maybe they don't care, and I'm the only one who does, and that wouldn't surprise me. Thanks. So, actually, before you go, sit back down. Just want to jump ahead to number 22. These non-stormwater discharges should not directly discharge to an exactly existing wetland or within associated buffer. So where is the non-stormwater discharge discharged?
On these ones, well, that's, that's related to a construct, during construction.
Right, yes, I understand.
Yeah, so if you, say, have a wash down or something like that, you'd contain it on-site. You wouldn't just dissect directly in. Say you do either a small heat valve for L, or you say, right, you have to pump it in there, or you do some form of treatment before it goes directly in. Yeah, somewhere like, you know, you're washing down, painting or something like that, you obviously don't want it directly.
So that's just going to be handled?
Yeah, it's just during construction. It isn't something after construction, it's more of a construction.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha. So, item number 20, can you just show on the plan where it was added?
This is basically a well-known top, and the buffer extends up in here.
Okay.
So we said, we described the work, we said, you know, there's work in the buffer behind there, but in the total buffer calculation, I didn't include the area.
So do you guys have anything in front of the Conservation Commission?
Yeah.
What's that? Is that already...
We've been there once, we continued it once, and the next year would be Thursday, but Steve's not going to be here, so we're going to have to continue again. There hasn't been any major items from that, mostly because, you know, the buffer is kind of over here, and we only, we're repaving over in there. There's no real, you know, upper work, either way, you know, because it's already disturbed with the firm and swell. So we haven't had any real kind of issues with that. And most of us don't want a comments from Fasmonia to all of them, they were in this letter, they were the ones taking conservation. And I've already agreed and signed off on those. Kind of ahead on them, we're behind with you guys.
So, number 14. I would like to understand, I don't know if there's a way for you to explain this to me?
This is, it's not bad. So there's a point discharge right here, for all this drainage that comes down as an existing drain line that comes out here. So your requirement at that point discharge is to have 80% treatment, so it's fine, it's solid removal. And what we did was we added a water quality structure here, which gets all the new stuff, and it treats it to 83%. So we're above the standard. But then there was this one catch basin down here, that we wanted to leave because I believe it picks up a subdrain that runs along the backside right here. Other than that, there's no real need for it. It collects a little tiny area right here that we could just regrade and let go down to the other endless. But, so what you do is basically, you say, this one, because the deep some catch basin gets 25%, this big area gets 83%, you average them together to get your end result at the discharge point. And when you weighted average them out, you get 82%. Because it's such a small area related to the, related to the big overall. So that's kind of a way you do it when you have multiple treatment systems on one discharge point, is you kind of weigh them all out.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I have the definition of height you wanted me to read it. The vertical difference between the average of the mean finished ground elevations of all sides of the building or structure, and the elevation of the highest point of the roof for flat roofs, to the deck line of mansard roofs, and to the mean height between eaves in ridge for gable, hip and gable roofs. This definition shall not include signs in the structure features exempt by 17415 here to extending not more than 20 feet above the permitted height. For buildings subject to site plan approval under 17410 hereof, the average finished ground elevation shall not be raised above the original natural ground fulfilled or regrading to more than two feet above the central line grade of the frontage street opposite the proposed building unless the approved site plan provides for such a buildup. What that means? I don't know. So that's that. Thank you. This is a nice plan. I like the, the open space, the lighting at, you know, 3,000 K is awesome. I like how it's built into the hill there, so it's not as intrusive as it could be. The landscape plan is specifically, no, it's, there are no natives. It's mostly all non-natives.
I asked him if he was using natives. He said he was using them mostly natives, and then he said he had a few formantals that weren't invasive. So I'm not sure exactly which ones are which. We could have him specifically switched along.
No, we thought, we thought you were largely native, Steve.
So just to clarify, cultivars are not native by definition? If they're cultivated, they can't be native? So there are a lot of cultivars.
Well, we...
The European one, the...
Well, these are the, these are, these are our screening from the front.
I think there is a, there is a native one, but that's not it.
Okay.
There is a native.
We definitely will respond to that, because we will do as much of it as we can native, as long as we can accomplish the screening, which we all want. So, thank you.
When I spoke with the Conservation Commission at their last meeting, and they are remittable to having that 6.2 acres under their care and control.
Okay, good. Can we speak to that just one second, just so that we're all clear? We calculated that with this line. So it's this line, which we created and up all the way to the current conservation line. So that's the 6.2 acre. We would be retaining this so we can look around, maybe a surface parking ramp or whatever we have to do. And then we would do the conservation easement or direct grant when we're done returning, I don't know the details, but that's the intention.
And was the landscape plan and the updated lighting plan sent to Fasmonia?
The whole supplemental package was.
Okay. So we need to hear from them on those. That's, that's all I have. Thanks.
Mrs. Flory?
Thank you. Thanks for addressing everything, Vito, Mr. Cox.
So my first comment is to my fellow planning board member, Mr. Stein. So I'm not as concerned with the, the coming to a point. I guess in my mind, as a, as a parking facility and support of an office structure, and to facilitate for your residents to be able to have parking, I think what you've presented meets the requirements that I would see would be appropriate. I think that I'm less inclined aesthetically whether that's changed, so I just wanted to address that point. I can't say I love that the six thousand two hundred cubic yards of clearing is a good thing, but I recognize it has to be done in order to put the garage in, so I wanted to just say thank you, appreciate that sixty-three will be removed, sixty-nine will be planted. And I think I would just echo, um, Mrs. Luttrell's comments regarding the native planting and to support what we've asked for. And again, just to commend you on, um, addressing many of the issues and, um, what we're trying to appeal in our town with the LED lighting and the native planting, and appreciate your efforts to do that. That's all I have.
Excellent presentation, as usual. Thank you. The one, the board that looks like this, kind of to me, huh? And I'm sure that it's in the more detailed drawings, but this rendering kind of shows what my question is. Remember at the last meeting, I reflected on its previous experience relative to the headlights shining out? And, um, so we asked that you somehow design the side, the sides of the building so that the headlights don't shine out. And looking at this, uh, it's clear that there's a, some type of a wall there that, um, seems to go just above the headlights. And if I remember right, the, uh, you know, the highway administration or the car designers, there's a requirement for maximum and minimum height of a headlight above the street. So can you talk, talk about what I'm looking at here, you know, with your microphone?
So I think what you're talking about is these, right in here, it looks like it's almost translucent. Yeah, it did, did say you could see the cars behind. But on the sides, there are these kind of parapet walls that stick up, so as you circulate through, it would cut that off. I didn't, I could check on the height, the height of that parapet wall. I don't have that in front of me. So basically, the only headlights you'd see is when you'd actually come out of the garage to the base floor. But these upper levels would get blocked off by that parapet wall.
Yeah, I would want you to come back and verify that. I guess, maybe there's some humongous SUVs where the headlights are considerably higher than the most.
They can get, you know, ninety percent of the light.
I just remember that parking garage down there for Genzyme, that was a discussion, and they verified, or they brought, they brought in, um, data that the car designers have to meet relative to the lowest point a headlight can be and, uh, the recommended height above the pavement. And my brain's telling me it's like thirty-three inches or something like that.
Yeah, it's in that range, because, I mean, there's always gonna be ones taller, but, um, you know, stock manufactured ones have to a certain height.
And what would that material be in that, that parapet wall?
I believe it was a concrete.
Oh, concrete, okay.
Yeah, just translucent mass that you can kind of see behind.
Sure. So the current headlights won't penetrate the concrete? Future design might, but...
Kind of shows you.
Yeah, I wasn't sure.
Yeah, so this is the concrete going across, and there's also, I'm not sure the material on those up and down verticals, but that's minimal, isn't it?
It's an additional screening of the parapet walls.
Is that, I neglected to look in detail, because you have, some of these drawings are very detailed. Do you recall if, if it's in these drawings?
The height of that parapet?
Well, not just, not just the height, but the materials? Is anybody brought to design to that point yet?
No. It is all precast concrete, um, but it's not specified in those drawings.
Okay, all right. We'll, we'll take a harder look at that, just want to make sure. And might cross-check back with public safety, um, especially the fire department, if those materials and those dimensions are acceptable. So, the fire chief, the commented, the fire department commented that they wanted to make sure that they could get the truck. Fire apparatus, um, below thirteen-five, fifteen-six, what it was. But the, the height of the deck is considerably lower than that. So if there's a car that's on fire inside there, they can't get a truck in there, right?
Not the ladder truck, no, not the big, the big one.
A pumper would fit in there?
Um, I'm not sure how big that pumper is. But I thought that that's what they're asking for, is circulation from the site.
Yeah, yeah, I think most parking garages are, you know, for the purpose of, um...
They get sprinkled.
Well, either that or just, you know, the cost of construction. They're, therefore, um, some, most SUVs and everything smaller than that. But the height of those decks sometimes is pretty low.
Yeah, they try to keep it as low as possible to keep the height down.
I was going to the Boston Garden once, and this guy in a giant SUV cut me off in Boston. And I wound up behind the guy going into the parking garage outside of the garden. And the guy's, it was so big, it wouldn't fit. So he had to back, he had to ask me to back up, so he could go find another spot. Which I gladly did. Yeah, I'll never forget that. Okay, open it up to the public, any questions or comments?
Can I use the mic here?
Yeah, sure.
Can you put up the, um, plan of the landscaping? And I'm Freddie Gillespie, Chair of the Open Space Preservation Commission, and we met this act this morning and discussed this, and we had discussed it previously, also. So first of all, I want to thank you for addressing so many of our initial concerns. This is a really, um, really great plan. I mean, I was trying to find the right word for it, but you really addressed many of our original concerns. One thing our commission had discussed earlier on was like using balloons to see how high the building was, if you could see it from the conservation land. I told them today, I don't think it's necessary, I just would like your confirmation that I'm correct, that this is pretty well tucked into the side of the hillside, and we're not gonna see it through the trees. Right?
Yeah, I mean, in the winter, you'll, when the leaves are down and stuff like that.
Yeah, I just, I think the need for balloons is not there, it's not like it's gonna be...
Yeah, it's not in the base, and it's not like the previous plan.
Right, so I just had to mention that, and you confirm my...
I'll just use a balloon right now.
Yeah, that, that's what I thought. The other thing was, um, I don't know, just scribbled here. The landscaping, I, you've addressed the, um, the non-native aspect of it, and, you know, we would also ask that any disturbed soil be planted with a native ground cover. So not only where you're landscaping, but like that ten-foot buffer, whatever ends up happening there, that it be planted, there are many options nowadays, whether it be sedges or things like, um, wild strawberry or ginger, those are a couple that come up. But do you have a picture with the, uh, the trees on it? Because one of the things you're doing is really great except it's a long Asian plant. This one here, this is an example of what a ground cover can be. The sumac is definitely a native. Those are the types of things we like to see. What we are asking for is no mulch. So when you see the trees, and this is, you know, you need to, I really landscape people, be sort of imaginative, what works there, but low-growing, something like this in between. What happens with, when you see these mulches, you create, you ever see trees and there's just like a sea of mulch? And then a tree or a shrub, that creates a dead zone, first of all. Insects live in the ground, they don't go through the mulch. That's one of the reasons for the native plant initiative for native pollinators. But also, um, it also promotes, if a weed pops up, they hit it with roundup. So we want to get away from that sort of chemical poisoning of our environment. And the third thing is, if it gets done right, it's gonna save money, because, you know, mulch has to be a landscaper's dream. You have to buy it every year, you have to lay it out. They often put it up in that volcano up around the trees, which actually kills trees. So we really would like to see not this, but living mulch around it. And there's ways of doing it, and certainly a landscape architect will know better. And that's just our recommendation. Um, we really want to get away from that mulchy look. But that's up to the planning board, this is our recommendation. The other thing was, um, we appreciate that the Conservation Commission is willing to hold it. Oh, the stewardship committee, which I'm a member of, for Breakneck Hill, is very appreciative of the gift of land. That is not insignificant. And, I don't know if I was trespassing, I hope not, I took the liberty of driving over there the other night, and, um, you know, it's pretty dark, and these woods are full of fireflies. So your three-k lighting and not having it brightly, that really is gonna help preserve that, because those are one of the species that are declining because of all the light pollution. So thank you for the three-k. And then here's, I think the most, um, off the, off-the-wall question towards, we're gonna ask for, it's always okay to ask. So, they recently put a sidewalk down Route Nine in front of your building, which makes Route Nine more walkable, and this town has a real walkability problem. And if people want to go to Breakneck Hill and you're walking, a lot of people from the office parks, you'll see them walking on Breakneck Hill Road, you've heard people talk about the traffic and how dangerous it is to walk there. If there is a way, and I was gonna ask, where is your trail connection to Breakneck Hill? Would you be amenable to allowing the public somehow to access Breakneck Hill from your, through your parking lot? And I understand that's invited the public in, and maybe not something you want to do, but you won't consider it unless I ask for it, so I'm asking. And then the other thing is, also, I noticed when I walked through, they have all these islands and you'd be crossing like parking lot areas. But if there was a way with crosswalks, it would also make it better for your, um, tenants to walk out to the sidewalk and they could walk down Dwight's Corner, instead of getting in their car and driving somewhere because they don't want to be cutting through parking lots. So if that's a possibility, that would go a long way towards allowing people to... And we certainly want your tenants to be able to walk Breakneck Hill, we know that's planned, but is there a way to make it a bigger asset for the town, to allow townspeople to walk? We cut to there.
Right now, right now, we're doing this. It has come out. There is this site plan, if there was a better showing, there's a Title V large separate sand filter here that we installed.
I was wondering about that.
That's what it is, yeah. And so we, and we landscaped around it significantly. And there is... So, there is a path. It was a natural path, they want to call it that, before we had moved stuff, the Title V system, where people had just been walking up and to get up into the conservation land. So we made a little P-Rock path after we installed this, and it comes just like this. And it comes around, and it gets, and it gets into that way. People use it all the time. So I don't know, I don't know... So this works good, but, but, you know, this responds to the tenants in these two buildings doing it. So how we get people, is a question, how we get people from Route Nine in and around and up and through here, I guess we just have to look at it, we have to look at that.
So, you know... On Building Twenty, on that side of the building, on the east side, is sort of like a loading dock, there's no way through.
Yeah.
Coming from here. Yeah, so, because I drove it. And, um... So if this is the area here, and like I said, there's lots of these little islands and you'd have to be crossing, but, you know, if this, you know, maybe instead of this ten-foot buffer, there could be a little area that people could, and then you end up here.
And I'm up there.
I don't know, but, is it too steep?
Oh, that's a real steep ledge, it's like ten feet.
And I don't know if there's a possibility for a sidewalk across here. I'm just asking to look at it, and I understand this is, you know, you're already signed out, but, um, it just occurred to us with the new sidewalk going in that this is an opportunity, and we're gonna start asking for, you know, anyone to consider these kinds of opportunities to make supper more walkable, because it is, I know it's a big initiative, many people want to start to walk.
Yeah, it's basically, if you were going to do it, you'd put a sidewalk basically coming kind of right up this edge, and then try to put something up in through that new stand or something. The only thing is, this is right, you'd have to build a hole. It'd just be a cost, basically, and then you take... I'll see what I know, you two, that's the only two issues I can think of, other than here, yeah.
Thank you.
Back to, uh, Mr. Cox. You say that it's used now. You say that when people walk up by that sand filter and get into the woods there, you say that that's used now.
It is.
Once they get up into the woods, where do they go?
There's, uh...
Can you take out the, the first one you put out there, you chose the hole?
Yes, absolutely.
And then, you know, where do they go? How far up do they go?
Trail right there.
There's a trail. You can go all the way up, I did.
It's a, it's a main trail running right along here to the parking lot. It used to always be paved, it was on, let's say it used to be some type of road, yeah.
You can walk it, and, and there's a, that, that old road or whatever it is goes one way, and then it's actually a little path.
Yeah, so you come right up along this edge, and then you can see the other trails all through here, but that's the main, it's the main path right there.
Please I bring that up, this... We've had other site plans, you know, one that comes to mind, um, kind of, in a negative way, is the EMC, um, site plan, where something similar was proposed from their site to walk and be accessible to a nearby residential street. And the people on that residential street, some of them came and were almost violent in opposition to having strangers roaming through their backyards and their street. It was, it never happened, but it was a reaction that was not expected. But it's also something that where you need to respect the residential neighbors, who may have a concern about, there's a lot of land there, but, and it does have a purpose for open space and accessibility. But there has to be some sensitivity to the neighbors and their backyards and, you know, to the... To what extent is it, is it open to, you know, everybody, which the neighbors may welcome that. know, everybody, which the neighbors may welcome. If we get into that, I think we would probably notify the neighbors that that's being considered, so that they, they would be aware that what's going on, what they think may be going on just on Route 9 and at the site, is actually reaching up into their neighborhood. Just a sensitivity issue, so. Go ahead, Gregor, Mike, Gregor.
So, being on the stewardship committee, we have management of the, of the oversight and management of the property. And that trail already, when that office building was fully occupied, during lunch hour, you could just see all the office workers coming up. The trail is, it hugs here, and it goes in here, and we're very aware of not being near any, any of the homes and that. All of the trails are pretty far away, so, you know, there's no reason that someone would be walking off trail. There's a couple of trails that a butter's had put from their, sort of, it's a well-beaten path, not a trail, to their backyards, but regular, you know, people using the trails don't usually go there. The only other issue is, this is public access, that at some point, the town may be, it's an old road, maybe looking to have access there. It's not something that's currently usable, it's, well, it hasn't been mowed. Every so often we do mow it, but that is a, like a 55-foot wide entrance to the property. So, there wouldn't be any access from that property going into people's backyards unless you bushwhack, and anyone could do that today if they wanted to park at the parking lot and bushwhack into it. So, I want to go to increase that concern.
Anyone else? Anything else? Oh, Tim.
Tim, just a quick observation, when we're talking about containing headlights, it occurs to me that any vehicle on a ramp going up is likely to have light shoot over the top of your parapet, unless you put some kind of obstacle. So if you're concerned, you might want to think about that in your plan.
Thank you. Going back to Mr. Stein's question regarding how could that happen, that the driveway is so close to the property line? And, Mr. Cox, you indicated that that site plan approval was in 1986?
There was, it was two phases. But yes, there was a site plan approval in the first building, was 1986, which would be the back of the 120 building, which was the closest to the building. And in that site plan, it included the potential for the five buildings, which I think was 1986. And we didn't buy the buildings until 2013, and so the site plans that we've studied are what it's saying now. But for the fact that we added the Title V septic, septic system, so there was changes to that.
I just know that in both of those years, I was on the planning board at that time, and the planning board may have approved that, I don't remember that level of detail as, as having a driveway on, that's right on, basically on the property line, but, site plan was pretty primitive back then. And I'm not sure if you remember, but prior to the planning board having site plan approval in Southborough was for selectmen. So, I'm guessing that by 86 or 88, that it has shifted from the selectmen to the planning board. But I do know that once the planning board got site plan, there was far more detail in approving a site plan, there were five planning board members and therefore, and there were only three selectmen. And an office building on Route 9 with parking, it was possible, I actually saw it one, one night, where the site plan came in, the presentation was made, and about an hour or two later it was approved, same night. Selectmen looked at it, said, "Looks, looks okay," or less, and, you know, they didn't get into the design calculations or a lot of the things that we're getting into, and back then, it would never be imagined, it would be sitting here talking about native species and suspended solids removal, I mean, back then it was just, it was, it was big picture, "Looks okay to me," and it would be approved. So that may have been one of the, you know, the things that, it worked, so it was okay. So we've come a long way with, with site plan. I, that's the, I think that's the only, without doing research on it and being able to definitively, definitively blame the selectmen, probably just let it, let it go at that maybe. There was no, no tape back then, so, you won't, you won't see a picture of me saying, "I think that's a good idea." Anything else? So, there's, there's more good work to be done on this, I think you're getting very positive feedback from everyone. The major site plan public hearing and major site plan approval period, that approval period ends on July 13th, and our next meeting is July 22nd. So, we're, we're, I think the board would be looking for you to request an extension of the approval period for major site plan approval to July 26th, which is the, Friday is the end of the week of that, next public hearing. So is that your request, that we continue, we extend the approval period for the major site plan to July 26th, close of business?
Yes, we would ask that the board consider that.
Mr. Mills?
Chairman, I make a motion to continue the major site plan approval period for 118 and 120 Turnpike Road to the end of day on July 26th, 2018.
Second? Motion's been made the second, all in favor? Okay, we've extended the approval period, now it's necessary for us to continue the public hearings. Public hearing for the special permit for lower impact development is August 12th, so we're, we're well within that on July 22nd. Mr. Mills? We actually, our last site plan earlier tonight, we extended that to 7:00 PM on the 22nd, so we'll be looking at 7:10 PM. Does that work for you, Mr. Mills?
Yes.
Mr. Mills?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we continue the public hearing for 118, 120 Turnpike Road, major site plan approval to July 22nd at 7:10 PM. I also make a motion that we extend public hearing for 118, 122 Turnpike Road, special permit, lower impact development, to 7:15 on July 22nd.
Second? Motion's been made the second, any discussion? Say none, all in favor? Okay, we'll see you on the 22nd.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Cox, you, you will now have to sign this request for continuation and extension of the public hearing. So we changed the, we had it taped up beforehand, we had, that was 7:00, now it's 7:10. July 22nd public hearing, and then the approval period till August 6th. You sign it again. If you'd like a copy before you go, you can do that.
Oh, that's fine. Should we do it tonight?
Yes. Sure. Well, Karina, Casey, get a line for the project, making a, trying to call me, send me some...
I think he's on his phone.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is a public hearing. 32 Marlboro Road, Clark Field Lighting, major site plan approval. I will ask our assistant, Casey, to bring the public hearing notice. Casey?
Uh, the public hearing notice for a major site plan approval, 32 Marlboro Road, St. Mark's School, assessors map 53, 53 Carson Line, Ludders Falls. Per Section 174-10 of the Southborough zoning code, the planning board of the Town of Southborough shall hold a public hearing on Monday, July 8th, 2019, at 8:00 PM, in the Thomas J. McCall of Hearing Room, second floor, townhouse, 17 Common Street, Southborough Mass, to consider the application of St. Mark's School regarding the property located at 32 Marlboro Road for major site plan approval. This hearing concerns a proposal to install four 70-foot tall athletic light poles at the perimeter of Sergeant Field, formerly Clark Field, and one additional 30-foot tall light pole along the pathway between the field and Route 85 and associated site work. The site work is located in the Residence A zoning district. A copy of the plans and application may be reviewed at the planning office at the Southborough Town Hall during normal business hours, or on the planning board's webpage at southboroughtown.com/planingboard. Any person wishing to be heard on the proposed changes should appear at the time and place designated.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Please introduce yourself and give us an overview of why you're here tonight.
Introduce yourself, I want you to jump in.
Hello, my name is Sandra Duran, I'm Director of Facilities at St. Mark's School, and I'm here representing the school in this application.
And I'm Meg Buzinski, with Lexi the Thoughts, we are the representative for St. Mark's School in this project. I would like to give you a quick overview of the project, and then we can dive right into questions, or I can walk kind of through the, through the application, you know, whenever you prefer. So, starting off, we are, move to the board. So Sergeant Field is formerly known as Clark Field, it's the synthetic turf field located off of Route 85, which runs up to the east of the field, and the main St. Marks campus is over on the east side of Route 85. The original turf field was permitted in about 2011, and constructed about that same time, changing it over from a brass field to a synthetic turf field. That project was approved under minor cycling review, and lighting wasn't, you know, anticipated at the time of that project. St. Marks is looking to put in athletic field lighting on the turf field, in order to provide some extended use, especially during the early spring and the late fall use. This was a difficult spring, where a lot of the fields were probably not very usable due to all the rain that we had, and there's just the ability to get the kids on for a little bit longer without impacting their studies, this is important to St. Marks. So the proposal here today is to install four 70-foot tall athletic light poles, and one 30-foot tall pedestrian light pole in this location to allow for safe access over to 85, leading over to the crosswalk, which crosses over to the campus. The field will be lit to about 50-foot candles, which is the appropriate amount for lacrosse, more the small ball lacrosse and field hockey type sports. It will be able to switch between two levels of lighting, 30-foot candles for kind of that larger, more practice type of play, soccer, potentially some football out there for practice only, and then to go up to the 50-foot candles for that lacrosse and field hockey style play. The poles themselves will have about eight fixtures on them at that about 70-foot height. These four poles are also, they also have two lights that shine up from about 15 feet to light the underside of the ball. The new LED fixtures from Musco, they're so well-focused, that you actually lose a little bit of that light on the underside with more soccer balls kind of going on to the, to the higher heights, so that's why they have those 15-foot fixtures actually pointing up towards that, the underside of that ball. In addition, on this pole right here, we're going to have two fixtures at about a 50-foot height to aid, once again, in pedestrian access, so following the completion of the field, the main lighting up at that 70-foot height can be actually be turned off, and then the pedestrian lighting can remain on to provide safe egress from the site. In terms of disturbance, the project disturbs less than an acre, it's right around just under a half acre, so it doesn't require the LED permit, but it is being reviewed by Conservation in regard to these wetlands to the north of the site, and to the west, and a little bit to the east, under a full notice of intent, as well as there's a variance into the ZDA to allow for the, the 70-foot height, which exceeds most of the structure height at 35 feet, and certainly the, the pole height of 15, 15 feet that's allowed in the zoning bylaw. In terms of where the light comes out to, this plan right here shows light levels associated with the light, so you can see we get out to zero foot handles, pretty much right along Route 85, and then if you've been out there, you know, right in that left field, the baseball field, down to, to pretty much no light spilling over. The lights that you have in town, that I believe are at the Woodard School, are actually a slightly older version of Musco's lighting system. This is kind of how the Musco system has, you know, gone better over time. What's over at the Woodard School is probably the HIB system, so you're still able to see some of that light coming out, that glare coming out, where the new LED fixtures truly are almost all cut off in terms of being able to see those, you know, that light coming off. In the pictures that we provided in the application, this picture from Gonzalez Field is actually the, the HIB-style lighting, and so you can see, as you're looking across from the drone view, you can see a little bit of that light coming out from the fixtures, and as you get into the new LED lighting from Musco, you can see how much of that cutoff is there in comparison to the new HIB. So the new St. Marks lighting would be obviously the new LED, is it LED, the LED lighting. So with that, we have requested a few waivers in regards to a few pieces of the zoning bylaw. I can walk through each one, or in the essence of time, we can hook it up to questions. We did receive from Casey Fussman O'Neill's comments back, which, you know, seemed pretty minor, it was a little shorter than what you guys just read there, so I won't have to go through all those, but for the most part, they had, they didn't seem concerned about the waivers that we were requesting. I think that they have a few clarifications just on disturbance, and then a few in terms of whether the poles are considered structures. I'm not sure, you know, I was thinking about that, I'm not sure, not that it's not relevant, but I don't know, it would, I don't think it would change much, but I'm happy to adjust that, you know, as the, as the board sees fit, or as the ZDA sees fit. And then the last one, or the last two that they brought up was hours of operation for the lights, we can address that in the application, which we can talk about in a second, and then the pedestrian poles, which are, which is the one located right by, excuse me, Route 85, and we have carried a 30-foot pole at the moment, and Fussman O'Neill was requesting that potentially we push that pole down to a 15-foot. If we do do a 15, we certainly do it, we just have to add a pole. With all of this lighting, the higher up you go, the more that light can focus down as opposed to out. If we drop that down to 15 feet, we're going to need more lights, probably just another pole in order to cover that, that area, the scene of lighting. In terms of the hours of operation, I believe the town has their own lighting policy, which I believe St. Marks was looking to mimic. I don't think we're really looking for anything outside of that, so we can, I can find that policy and get reference to that in regards to Fussman O'Neill's comments. So, questions?
Let's go through the Fussman O'Neill letter dated July 8th, which we're just obviously seeing for the first time today, and you, you had seen it earlier today?
Uh, I saw, oh, thank you. I saw it on my phone before I got here.
So with that in mind, we'll just go through it and there may be some questions after we go through it. Knowing that we've all just seen this for the first time, not really expecting rock solid answers, but commitments to look into things with those questions. So take us through one through five. You kind of did, oh, and then the comments and concerns, which would be six through 13.
Sure, yeah, we're good, sure. So the first comment number one is in regards to the requirement in the bylaw about information on the proposed site within 300 feet of the property line. We are asking for a waiver on that because of the location of the actual field is far enough away that it doesn't touch any other property within that 300 feet that's not St. Marks. So we've asked for a waiver from that requirement, which Fussin O'Neill seems to be okay with.
Why don't we, as we go through these, I know that this deals with the, not necessarily the limits of the work, it deals with the property. So, for example, the town hasn't formally applied yet, but Town of South Borough is looking to do a similar lighting project at one of their fields. And again, the field is near a street, but it's part of a much larger piece of property. So even though the field might be over 300 feet from another person's property, it's not measured that way, it's measured from the property line. So there are, for example, dozens of homes that abut the school's property where the town must have put these lights. And so there are dozens of residences that abut St. Marks land. So the board would have to, I guess, consider and look at any feedback from any neighbors to see if we want to waive that.
All right, second is the requirement to locate all trees larger than six inches in size. The proposed work is all within existing open space, we don't go into area, we're not clearing any trees, we're not taking down any trees, we're not going nearly near any trees. So we requested a waiver because our survey didn't really, it didn't expand into that area with the exception of the wetland markings. Number three is just about the contours, so we have one of the contours rather than two. It's a little more detailed than the two quote, which is usually okay. The second number three is about, we had included a lot of the manufacturer's specifications in the application as opposed to on the plan, so we can add those to the plan, so it's reflected there. And the next, number four is very similar, we'll make sure all of that information gets onto the photometric plan rather than just being in the application. And then number five is, the plan that I have on the ground there, there's no light trespass beyond the property lines mostly everywhere. And then even along 85, it's showing that it's very minimal, there's a .1 kind of right on that property line. And that's the only, you know, small amount of trespass that we're seeing. And they, Fussin O'Neill didn't think that was an issue, didn't think a waiver was required. Moving on to the comments and concerns, number six, they did some scaling off of the limit of disturbance. We will double check that. One thing, and I don't know if this is where the discrepancy is coming from, is we did not include the access point across the field in this location within the turf field limits as disturbance. That's just access for the drill rig, rather than sending the drill rig around the field. There's a lot of access over here and I didn't want to disturb that much soil along those edges. We're going to try and keep the trenching very close to the field. So we're actually going to access across, but, and I don't know if that's the discrepancy, but we'll double check that, that limit of disturbance. Either way, it's still below the one acre, so it's not triggering the LED requirements.
So the drill rig, I mean, that's a turf field. You can't just replant it, so...
We're going to protect it.
So there should be zero disturbance, if it goes onto that turf field?
Correct. We have disturbance from, you know, that 14,000 number that you see in there, I believe, and that's when I double check, is the electrical trench that goes around the edge. And so we, I don't know if that's what Fussin O'Neill was counting. So I'll check in with Amy and Dan to see if that's where the discrepancy is. Let's see here, so number seven, so number seven comes into the light poles, whether they're light poles or structures. We kind of assumed that they were structures because they require a building permit. I think for my intents and purposes, it's six and a half dozen together, but we'll discuss, do you have a concern?
The board, I'm not sure if this, all of these members, but again, in discussions with the town for their similar project, it was made clear that the planning board considered the lights and the poles and the bases to be structures.
Okay, great. So number eight is about a little bit more clarifying where the light fixtures are in the poles. So as I mentioned, there's eight actual light bulbs on the top of the poles at that 70-foot. There's two at that 15-foot height to underlight the ball. And then there's, on one of the poles, there's two security lights at 50-foot height. So we will clarify that on the photometric plan, get that information all on there. Number nine, yep, so we're going to go before ZDA, we're scheduled for July 17th. Hopefully we'll get a decision that night, which would be before the planning board sets something. So hopefully we'll be in good standing there. Number 10, the waiver from the 20-foot height, that was just a mistake on my part. I put it as the normal residential, which was 20 feet, so I'll clarify that in response to reflect the 15-foot height that we're exceeding. This is similar, it has to do, I believe, with that 20-foot height and then the structure. But if we're going to keep, if we are going to consider those poles a structure, then I think we're okay there. You know, the bylaw has that 20-foot height and they talked more about like antennas off a building or silo and things like that. It doesn't specifically say light poles, but we kind of take that into account. Whether that's, the board's amenable to that, we can adjust it if needed. Hours of operation, as I mentioned, St. Marks is willing to go, you know, with the town's policy for the lighting. And then number 13 is just about pedestrian light and whether we go with, you know, 215 versus 30. We certainly can, it's just the, most likely we might get a little bit more spill because, you know, the lower you go, the more lights have to point out as opposed to, you know, maybe higher and straight down. So if you feel strongly about being 15 feet rather than 30, we can certainly look at that.
So I'll come up to the board for questions and comments. It says here that you have applied for a ZDA variance?
Yes.
Do you have a date?
The 17th of July.
Is for your hearing?
Yes. And then we're going for Conservation for the notice of intent this Thursday, November 11th.
Mr. Stein? So, thank you for coming in. I've been on the field, my son played lacrosse there, too, for the field, he did a great job. So the hours, I guess, I know you said with our town policy, I just want to make sure, I think there's a big difference between the men's playing softball down in front of the Woodward compared to what you're probably going to need, I know sometimes there are games that go a little late. They stay out there sometimes, very late, I assume it's not going to be that late.
No, and I don't remember the exact timing of the town's policy. But with that, they will be set to turn off at that time. So even if there are people on that field, I'm trying to correct me if I'm wrong, but with the Musco controlling system, the school can set them on a timer, they go off at that time. No ifs, ands, or buts, probably have the security lighting on for about 10 more minutes after for just, you know, safety egress from the site. But we can look at that and we can address that as part of the comments.
Yeah, so I think that would just be one of the conditions we'd want to have that ironed out the next time. Any plans for additional lighting of any of the other fields?
Not at this time.
Any plans for additional pedestrian field?
No, not at this time.
Who's going to be using the fields tonight? I know the school, and I ask because I know we've had, I don't know if it was here or other places, but just, I know the recreation department, they have men's league come in and things like that. Like I said, my own son has played on that field. So is the night use going to be reserved just for St. Marks? Is it going to be possible for men's soccer leagues or, you know, rented out? Or, you know, just wondering how often, you know, the lights are going to be on? Could it be summer camp too? You know, you used to have a summer program in there. You know, is it going to be on all during the summer as well? I'm just trying to get an understanding of.
Well, primarily, the primary focus would be for the students, is our first and foremost. But when they're hired down times, our opportunities to, whether they have town participation there, community participation, or rented out, I think we would be open to that. We are most interested in making sure their athletic program has a longer time span and that we're able to provide that space for our students.
And this, I'm just curious because we approved the solar panels recently. Is the solar, the solar panels, is that going to provide some of the energy for this? I was just curious, yes, we did that. So summer hours would mimic the winter hours, I assume, too? Fall, spring? So parking, that was my other question, so I never went out. We have, when I've been there before, these, a lot of the land just north of the library, no intent of putting lighting over there for parking afterwards or anything like that?
I understand that there have been, I'm somewhat new to St. Marks, I came last fall, so I haven't been part of these discussions. But it's my understanding that the town and St. Marks have discussed the possibility of joining both parking lots as parking for the community for St. Marks. At that time, I would imagine that might even be a consideration. Currently, it is not something that we have planned to do.
And lastly, you asked about the 15 or 30-foot pole for the pedestrian, I'd be in favor of the 15. And to prep you, there's probably going to be a question about how dense the light is from the blue lights that's coming off. Like that, there's a push really to cut down on the blue lights as much as possible as it could corrupt sleeping evidence or native species, animals inside something else, so.
We address some of that in here, I mean, in terms of the athletic lighting, those light fixtures are at 5,700 K. And you really can't get below that, it was at 3,000 that you're looking for. But in terms of athletic lighting, we're looking a lot of the way great now, let me think about those athletes out there. So we can look at that and see what is available from the manufacturer for the pedestrian lighting. You know, just with that one or two lights going up towards the road, but the athletic lighting would all be above that, they're all at 5,700.
Thank you. Mr. Stein?
Hi. So I notice on the map in the list of 300-foot abutters, it's true that St. Marks itself is the 300-foot abutter. But there are a number of private residences just beyond that 300-foot buffer zone. Has it been your intention, or is it your intention, to notify or consult with those residents just beyond the 300-foot buffer zone about this matter?
If requested.
Well, it's a large illumination project. It's highly likely that these people will be impacted in some way by this happening. Would you agree?
I would, I would agree. I mean, if we're looking over at Ledge Hill Road, you know, the light values that you're seeing on that, on this plan over here, you know, on the ground there, all assumes a flat, wide-open space. You know, Kansas, wide open, right? We have dense trees, we have topography, we have all those things. There's, I don't, I don't see an instance where it's possible that people over on Ledge Hill Road or beyond could potentially see that lighting.
Even though the poles are 70 feet high?
I mean, they could look out the window and maybe see, I don't think they're going to see the glare really, because when you look at... When you look at how that new lightage is, I mean, I would say if it was lighting like what was that over at Woodward, which is that kind of last generation of the HIB, going over and seeing a little bit of glare, you might see it, it's not shining on you, but if you look out, you could see it. But in terms of the new LED fixtures, it is really, really hard to see those from far away. You would see that there might be a field illuminated, but they would have to be up at, over those trees, which, I mean, those trees have to be about at least 50 feet high. And then you think about the topography between, what are the fields, by the dorms? Because Ledge Hill's even beyond those dorms, that topography change is great, I don't know. I just don't see an instance where they would actually be able to see that.
The field is tucked, you know, from 85 to really tucked off and behind. So, you know, if you were looking for it, to your point, yes, you might see some, right? But the field is illuminated, but you're not going to get that glare that you're sort of used to in old films.
And then in the application, just find that page, in those Musco summaries, there's a page right here that shows the vertical illumination. This is basically a measure of glare around, and this is under, it's 150 feet away from the poles going backwards. And that glare is around, you know, it averages out about 500. And if I remember right, a porch light has kind of a lumen count of around 1,000. So, you know, any of that glaring, that light that you're kind of seeing coming back towards you at all or that you're recognizing, is minimal even 150 feet away from that field. So I wouldn't agree that, you know, 300 people beyond 300, especially from that property line, which is so far away, you know, as you go northwest or south, that you're going to notice that.
Okay. Well, I would be curious if you're, you know, I mean, ultimately, I know you want to be a good neighbor to in this community. I would suggest, maybe ponder the situation. I'm sure, as subsequent meeting, we can revisit this.
Do you think there's a particular member that would be concerned that we should, I mean, address right away? Or just not having many others here, we don't, not ask concern, but I appreciate your consent.
Well, nobody was notified.
Well, 300 feet were notified.
Which is no private residences.
Well, it's all Ledge Hill.
So, okay. I thought that the private residences on Ledge Hill were not notified because they're not...
No, they're not. We did all the proper notification per the bylaws, so everyone within 300 feet of the bylaw were notified. The waiver, the question that we're asking is, it basically says on your survey that you should be providing all the information about those abutters on your survey. We just didn't want to survey out that far. But in terms of notifications, all of those people were notified appropriately.
Okay, so the Ledge Hill people within the 300-foot?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
Yeah, everyone on this map that's in red or orange, however printed up for you, but all those people have been notified.
Yeah. I just, I mean, I know you're not obligated, but there are people on the other side of Ledge Hill Road, for example, that may have visibility of this. I know that you think not, but since you're here at a planning board meeting.
Sure.
And we have the director of facilities for the school. It's an opportunity for me to just voice that concern. Have you think about it and come back and address it in another meeting.
Thank you.
Mrs. Luttrell?
Thank you. Sorry. So the waiver that you're asking for, for the 300 feet, is you don't want to show the abutters on the plan, or?
Yes.
Okay.
I just didn't want my survey to have to go out that far.
Oh, okay.
Because it's so far away from the site.
Oh, all right, all right, I get what you're saying. And so, do you know how tall the lights at Chalk Hill?
I don't know for sure. I drove by, is Chalk water?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I mean, I'm thinking that they're probably 65, they might be 70. You see a lot of poles that are up at 90. 70-foot is kind of on the lower end. The lowest Musco goes is 60, because at that point you just can't get the coverage over a field, or really any field. Usually maybe softball fields will have that, but if it's used for adult league, they're probably around 70, but I don't know that for sure. That's something I could check in on to compare.
And will those, these lights look the same?
Similar, just the actual lamp style. You know, I believe they have this, so there's that cover.
Need a microphone.
Someone tells me I'm so loud, it's rare that I need a microphone. So it'll look like this. So the actual fixture is a little bit different, but in terms of the poles are going to be, you know, exactly the same, they'll have dip galvanized, you know, silver poles. Very skinny, they're like three feet at the bottom, they go up to about like 10 inches at the top. So it's very similar.
Those lights look like they belong on the mass pipe and stuff. Such a shame that these are popping up all over the place in South Monroe. And so, could you explain a little bit more in detail? You say the taller the light, the less the spillover, the lower?
Sure. So when you think about the lights, like, let's say that this, you know, table is the field. You always have to have your lights obviously on the perimeter. So the shorter that the light is, the more that fixture has to point out to get it over across the field. The taller it is, the more kind of angle it has to come down to hit those spots. So as you, you know, as you go taller and taller, you're able to have that fixture point more down as opposed to out.
And these lights will point down better than the ones at Chalk? Because I know they've had issues with those lights, with the abutters.
Yes, they will. You know, it's interesting, on a lot of, with these new fixtures, let me get back, on the previous fixtures, the 2005 HIB, on a lot of baseball fields, just for like, for example, a lot of baseball fields, they didn't have to provide additional kind of lighting for bullpens because they had enough spill coming off the field lighting. But a bunch of projects recently, that's not the case. And so you're actually having to light the bullpens separately because that LED lighting is so focused, that it really is going down and that spill kind of off to the side of the field, right behind the poles, is so dramatic that even pedestrian lighting is being added in, similar to what St. Mark's is doing because you can't rely on that field lighting to provide that spill to the rest of the site.
So you're before the ZBA?
Next, maybe, yes. The 17th, Wednesday, Thursday?
Yeah. So I have a process question. Do we usually see the site plan before they have the variance that's required?
That's why I ask, because we've started the site plan, and I think the town planner and I discussed that as to whether or not to launch on this or not. And because of the closeness of the hearings, it seemed, it seemed okay to start the public hearing, but we definitely wouldn't finish it, we can't until, until us determine the variance. If you don't get the variance, we can come back with a different plan or the project's dead.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
Mrs. Holley?
Thank you. So I just did a quick search, and it said Chalk was approved with seven light poles between 40 and 80 feet.
Between 40 and 80, okay.
Yes, so that's probably why with the way that the, those old HIB fixtures. I actually, I think everything's been addressed here. I just wanted clarification, I know Ms. Luttrell just made the same question, but the three, the waiver is for not doing the survey, but for this public hearing, you notified all of the abutters that were in the list that you sent us.
Yes.
Indicating that there were like seven neighbors on the Chalk or something like that.
Yes.
And so the request then is to go across the street to those people that may have lined up the site? Is that what I understand, Mr. Stein?
It did occur to me, given the illumination, 70 feet high, they may want to consider notifying, you know, just beyond the requirement that there's a public hearing for this.
I mean, I will just say, as being an activist person in town that has now joined the planning board, it's the summer and a lot of people don't see these things. I think it would, I would also suggest, as Mr. Stein, just to kind of get those people that see across the street from the abutters, it would just be the good neighborly thing to do and to, you know, encourage that community approach with people, so I would support that as well.
Thank you.
Well, this list could go to the residences on Sears Road. St. Mark's Land goes all the way to Sears Road. And then anyone within 300 feet of that property line would have to be notified. Can I ask you, you're before conservation, and you're before the ZBA, and both of those hearings require abutter notification. Why don't you do it with them?
So same thing, we actually sent conservation, because we're only doing the NOI, only required 100 feet, but we actually put the notification in with the planning boards, just to skip a mailing. So the notification for conservation was also 300 feet, even though it only had to be 100. And then ZBA, Alex, do you remember ZBA 300? 300 as well for ZBA. So people were notified in two different mailings. One of those mailings had conservation and planning board in there.
But again, no definition of 300 feet, it's 300 feet from the field.
Nope, not for notification. Notification is 300 feet from that property line. So this, on this map that we have in here, that property line goes all the way out to Ledge Hill, and then it's 300 feet from that property line. So in terms of, I don't know if I'm reading the zoning piece wrong. I, I thought that the waiver request that we had was about providing on a survey all the names and information of people within 300 feet of the property line, not about a abutter notification. Abutter notification, we are following the guidelines, the rules, the requirements of the zoning bylaw. So from that property line that's very large, within that green bubble, all those people were notified, and that's within 300 feet of that property line.
What property line?
St. Mark's property line. On this parcel, on this parcel, which is the requirement of the.
So there's a separate parcel that goes out, if this parcel does not go onto Sears Road?
I'm not sure where Sears is, this is Ledge, this is Ledge, no, is this Sears?
No.
This is Sears.
Sears is north-south.
Gotcha. No, I mean, if that's 300, I mean Sears is 600, 900, probably around 1,000 long feet.
So you went to the assessor's office and got the list of the names of the people that live within 300 feet of that parcel's property line?
Yes.
Owned by St. Mark's?
Correct.
And then you notified all of that?
Correct.
I don't know how we can have something so simple that we're still having a hard time understanding.
I promise, people were notified that it's required by public, public hearings.
Okay.
We have the green cards in, the certified mailings in, all those kinds of things.
I think maybe a better question is, what's the distance to the nearest non-St. Mark's property?
I mean, I think.
From the field?
I mean, everything along Marlboro Road is St. Mark's. So the nearest would be, I guess, just to help, it's either going to be this property, which is along Main Street, not sure the number, but along Main Street, or it's going to be, because this is all St. Mark's up here, or it's going to be one of the properties along Ledge Hill, or it's going to be the church or town hall, kind of to the south of the site, but.
Right, north of the town.
Right, right, right. But, I mean, in terms of, I mean, let's assume that it's this house here that's over, whatever number is off of Main Street. I mean, that is from the field, I mean, that's, that's 600.
Church.
I mean, that's at least 900 feet, if I'm measuring off right. And you're, I thought maybe St. Mark's property as well.
Okay. So Activitas has prepared these project plans.
Yes.
You're the designers.
Yes.
This project involves electrical engineering design, site work designed for excavation, and conduit installation. It involves structural, will be concrete structures that will hold poles, all of which requires a professional engineering design and documentation. So who is ultimately responsible for the entire project?
In terms of the implementation?
In terms of being responsible for the design and the construction.
So we have did the project out. We have awarded the project verbally and leading to legal authority. At this point, we want to know where we're at. Island Light Empower will be the installers of the poles themselves and the foundations. Nice Electric will be the electrical installer. Island Light Empower will do all the trenching and field protection as well. And then ultimately, Musco will have the drawing stamp, that will give the stamp drawings for the structural portions of the project, which include a precast foundation, even pump concrete, and really cool, I'm very excited about. Hopefully seeing myself, and, and ultimately St. Mark's will be responsible to make sure that it is constructed.
Thank you. I'm glad you gave us that level of detail. But if something goes wrong, who is ultimately, who is the person that the town goes to? Who is responsible for the project, other than the owner? Because you're not the designers. Who's responsible for the design and the design coordination?
So in terms of the site plan, it would be Activitas. In terms of things with the building permit, it would be Musco, because they're the ones, their structural engineer is going to sign, is going to stamp the structural. So the building permit will be, Nice Electric will apply for the building permit, and they'll be bringing the Musco stamped foundation drawings to be approved.
The reason I'm asking is because of the nature of the project. Like any project, project we had before here is a structural parking garage, but it also involves lighting, site work. What we need to know is who is ultimately responsible. And it's a great concern relative to these type of projects because of the, even though they're very simple, there's a potential for something very bad to happen because these structures are so high and they're so energized. So, and the clients, people that are using it are children. So it needs to be crystal clear who is responsible. If, if, if something falls, is Musco going to say, that's not our fault? It's the concrete guy, the precast concrete guy's fault? If someone gets electrocuted, is Musco or Island Electric?
Island Light Empower?
Are they going to say, it wasn't our fault, it wasn't our wires, it's the site work guy's fault? He didn't install the conduit properly, or he didn't dig the ditch properly, or he didn't backfill properly? And everyone's pointing at each other. And in the meantime, there's no corrective action being taken because nobody wants to take responsibility. So the town needs to know, the planning board needs to know, who's ultimately responsible for the project?
Well, as the representative, I'm responsible for the design that we did, but in any project is going to have subconsultants and subcontractors.
Right, somebody has to be responsible for the coordination.
I appreciate that. And I, I mean, a NEST is going to be the general contractor. So they're going to go for the building permit and going to go through their electrical permits. And so they're responsible for the construction to meet the plans that were, is all, that are all being reviewed and approved by planning board, conservation, and the ZBA. And then the contractor, whether or not he is subcontractor or not, in this case he will, is responsible for the construction.
And Mr. Chairman, like many projects, there are milestones where structural engineers will come out and make sure that the trench is done properly. Electrical engineers, the town electric, electrical inspector will come out and make sure that everything's been tied off and done properly. Will sign off on the permit. During those milestones, they'll be, subject matter experts will be looking at just what you're saying because we are very aware of how dangerous this could be, should something go wrong.
Yeah, we know that. But it's our job to make sure that there is a point of contact, a responsible entity. If the town can go to.
That's not the owner. That's not the owner.
Why wouldn't that be the owner?
It may be if you declare that the owner is ultimately responsible. But we need it for the record. So if we, for example, we're having this issue, or this discussion with the town, if the town wants to illuminate a field, who's ultimately responsible? Is it the selectman? Is it the town administrator? Is it the planning board that approved the site plan? Is it St. Mark's? Is it the general contractor? We just need that. And it sounds like you've got your arms around who is ultimately responsible, and that should be part of the record. Playing soon? Thank you. Now parking, I think that's the first effort, maybe it's well-known, that there's a discussion about sharing parking. Was that the, you know, on, at football games, St. Mark's football games, and then for the Heritage Day event, where St. Mark's lets us use the field? And the library parking lot, so it's full. And then they wind up parking on the grass up to that point where it's like kind of ledge, there's a little bit of ledge there, you gotta be careful. And then that, further up into the triangle, you guys just regraded that a little bit, made it a little bit more formal. And I think you might, I don't know if you took any of those rocks out of there, but. Is that the area that you're talking about, going from the library parking lot all the way up to the triangle?
That's what I had, yeah, that's what I understood, that there had been some preliminary talks about whether or not that made sense, but it would be years from now, much after the Main Street project, that they would even be considered.
Again, we've had this discussion with lighting fields in the town. And connecting that, the main thing, of course, is the illumination at night in an area that's not light usually lit. But it's also, an almost equal component of that is the traffic. So some of these fields, you would have, if it's not lit, you'd have one set of cars come, they play a game, and that set of cars leaves, and that's it. With a field that's lit, you have a set of cars that come for the first game. With a field that's lit, you have the set of cars that come for the first game. Then, while that first game is still being played, but late in the game, we have the arrival of the second game car set. And there's not enough parking, and there's a, uh, a conflict of, of traffic, where at some point, people are trying to find a parking spot, and others are trying to leave. And the planning board has made it clear that we consider that a change in use, because of the, the nature of the, the double set of cars, double set of, um, of trips. Trip in, trip out, another trip in, another trip out. So, that's gonna be a concern too, unless you come back to us and say that, um, that doesn't apply to the way you wanna use the field. I don't think we have, um, other than the parking, I don't think we have jurisdiction over whether or not you rent it out, uh, you know, just let people use it free, town, you know, leagues. Not sure if we have jurisdiction over that, 'cause it's your field, you can do, do what you want. But as far as the traffic and the, and the parking, that, we do have jurisdiction, because it's a public safety matter, and that, that falls under the site plan. So, if you tell us, I guess if you told, told us that the way you intend to use the field, that there, that there will only be one set of, um, car trips, or during the period of, uh, transition between the first set and the second set, this is how we plan to handle it, then that, the board would have some comfort level, and that will be considered to be a change in use.
We can look at how it's handled on Saturdays, 'cause I imagine Saturday is, we have multiple, um, games being played on that field, so we can see what that spacing is, um, and we can check if there have been concerns about parking during that time, you know, if there are any issues before. So, we'll follow up on that.
But isn't, uh, when St. Marks has a game, you're playing like, you're playing another school, and so, it, it wouldn't be multiple schools coming in, multiple groups, it would be the parents of the St. Marks kids and the parents of the other school kids.
But then all the other people who rent the field, like lacrosse practices, and I know there's a lot of other use out there now, so we'll, we can certainly follow up on that and see how that's handled.
I mean, I think the best example is like the tournament at the cage, when lacrosse is in there and hockey's going on, I mean, I mean, the planning board is standing, and, um, oh. And, and also, you know, I didn't, you know, just kinda state it, but if, if there's any tournaments you're planning on having there, now with lights and everything, that's where it dawned really talking about where you really have that turnover of use, and people coming in and out, and that's why I was asking about the summer hours and everything, people coming in and out.
We can definitely, we will address that absolutely.
So, your homework is climbing now. That's good. Okay, uh, any other questions or comments, seconds? Anyone from the public? Yes, ma'am.
So, Freddie Gillespie, Chair of the Open Space Preservation Commission, and, um, our commission met this morning and spoke, we discussed this, and there's great concern over the light. As you know, you may have heard, you know, we're looking for the non-blue light, the 300K. I understand in your letter that you're saying we can't do this for, um, sporting events. We're not light experts, but we have been working with someone who knows quite a bit about it, who's actually presented, and the planning board is aware, Dr. Hyman, who cannot be here tonight because he's got surgery in the morning. We didn't know that at the time, our commission, um, agreed to get some input from him this evening and, um, go with that, because, um, you know, we would feel much more comfortable having an outside opinion on actually, because so much different, changes are being made on light, and if there's a way to use the less blue LED light. We're not in favor of the seventy-foot poles period, um, and we don't quite understand the spillover, how much light is that? When you're in a big field, and next to it is open field land, that spillover is into that land, how much more area mass is being lit? When you go up high, there's way more sky space being lit, in my, you know, I'm not an expert, thinking that you're going to see from all over town, you know, and you're, this is our historic area, so that's another pocket, but, um, the concern is with the, uh, for the Open Space Commission anyhow, is with the impact to our wildlife, to our pollinators, our moths, and it just seems with a seventy-foot pole, you have way more air space being lit that is going to be impacting our, um, vulnerable species, our, um, that are right now going extinct or dying, you have drag, um, you know, all kinds of pollinators and lightning bugs, and, you know, this, this kind of lighting is not, not a great thing, and it's hard to justify, you know, that need, which isn't a human need, versus sports and that desire, but, um, you know, we believe that Dr. Hyman may be able to provide some more information, particularly also with, um, depending on how the ZVA hearing goes, and then with this board's, um, decision, you know, if you can get to a lower blue light level, would be better. Lower poles would be better. And then, sorry, I just went blank, um, the, the timer. Is this gonna just be on a timer, so that whether they're playing there or not, it's, it's gonna be on, so that will be shut off when it's going to be playing?
Right, so, um, the, the system is designed that, um, St. Marks, you know, when they say, okay, we are gonna be using the field at this time, this time, and this time, um, and that they can go in, and it's a computer system, they can, where they can punch those times in, and that's when it goes on, that's when it goes off, and all those things. So, it's not like, you know, an old switch that it's on from 3:00 PM to, you know, 10:00 PM or something like that, it's, it's by, um, it's by actual sporting event they go in there.
So, those are the comments from the Open Space Commission, which is just dealing with the impact to our natural spaces, um, but now I'm gonna take that hat off and speak as a citizen. And if say, I, I don't know that they knew this was happening tonight, but I was CCing on an email, I mean, on a letter sent to the ZVA, the Historical Society, which is in the, um, building, I, I would imagine the town owns the building, so the society may not have been notified of this hearing, which is why, I don't know why you didn't get the letter. They wrote in opposition to it. There, this is our historical downtown, it's really sad to think it's gonna be brightly lit most nights, you know, that it's, it totally is going to change the flavor and the feeling of this town when you drive through it, and I, I understand the need for sports and, you know, balancing concerns, but I think it's really, really sad, we just spent a lot of money on that old burial ground, we're spending money on the library, you know, hundreds of, you know, got over a million dollars in historical funds that recently have been spent on our historic resources in town, over two million now with the library and the Burnett House, and it's, it's just really sad that we're going to be brightly lit up at night and not like the historic town that is one of the greatest benefits of this town. So, I don't think it's gonna change anything, but I'm not alone in feeling very, very sad that we're losing a huge part of the year, which is-
Oh, you know, I, I don't know what you can do with the, the blue lights from the, from the poles, if this all, if serving, but it'd be interesting if there are other areas, if St. Marks is a big property and a lot of lighting that you need for the kids to get to dorms, if you can change those lights maybe to lower, um, blue light throughout the campus, that might be nice.
We can take, take it down, for sure.
Off, stop that.
Thank you.
Just an estimate, uh, I know earlier you said, um, that it would be spring, uh, mostly in the spring and in the fall, um, but you're not limiting yourself, you're not excluding the use of the field in the winter either, are you?
We can't, we can't play on in the winter, it would damage the turf.
Even if it's a mild, uh, stretch in the winter, where there's no snow on the ground? I saw them plow it last, like, this past winter.
Yes, they do plow it, but that's to, so that, um, it'd get the snow off, so it doesn't damage the field.
So, the snow will do more damage than the plow?
With the water, yeah, water, it's not running off, trying to manage that.
Well, maybe you wanna come back, if you wanna, uh, limit the use of the field, uh, that, that would probably be in, in the approval document. The field would not be used between, I don't know, November fifteenth and April fifteenth, if you, if you were to say that, uh, that might give some people comfort, but, but I don't know if, if St. Marks wants to limit, limit itself to that. And so, based on your current thinking of the use of the field, how, how many nights do you think it would be lit out of the 365?
I don't know the athletic program well enough to be able to give you an exact answer. I think we did address that in the follow-up. I have to go back to, to the director of the athletics and kind of figure that out.
That'd be, that'd be a good, uh, a good question. I know, uh, I think, there's enough members on the board who remember when we approved the face school, uh, fields on Mill Street in Marlboro, uh, the neighbors were concerned, and, uh, Face said, "Well, it's, it's, it's not gonna be used in the winter", so, basically, six months, it would just be an open field in darkness. And that, that made people feel that, uh, the neighbors feel like, "Well, okay, so, six months, no neighbor, total silence, darkness, we can live with that."
It's some of the neighbors, too, I heard.
Some, yes.
It was a lengthy process.
So, I think that would be, uh, some valuable information, without, without, you know, limiting yourself to use your own field, but if it was a pretty rock, solid program, well, no, we never, we would never use it in December, we would never use it in January. Then just, just say that, make it part of the record, and if you wanted to make it a condition, we could do that, don't, then we could do the better.
Yeah, let me just confirm, I know for this year, um, I was asking you a question, if we were to get approval, when, when is that, when are the athletic fields available? When is that field available, and I was told it's under night, so to your point, I think that they did actually play on that field after that. My limited experience from last season, they didn't, but I will confirm with, with follow-up. Thank you.
Yeah, it, it might not be based on what you've done in the past, because you, with lights, you'd, you'd have a whole new, you know, world in which to conduct the sports for the school.
They switch sports.
Any other questions or comments? So, right now, um, the site plan approval period runs to, uh, August sixteenth. Did you wanna come back in two weeks, July twenty-second?
Yes, yes.
So, we'll continue, if, uh, that's okay, we'll continue the public hearing to go best for the time. And between that time, we will update and provide the information that we discussed here tonight to the town planner, and then, uh, to the board members and others, and, uh, so, you know, I mean, I know Preston O'Neil just came in today, so we'll kind of hold him out, and then we'll, we'll get the, uh, the new information in the, uh, Mr. Minister.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to continue the public hearing for thirty-two Marlboro Road, Clark Field Plating, uh, for a major site plan approval to, um, July twenty-second at eight twenty PM.
Second. Most have been made in second, any discussion? All in favor? We'll see you on the twenty-second, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a vote. Discussion item, uh, relative to a vote to reestablish the deed research committee. It's indicated that there's more work to be done by that committee, uh, so a simple vote to reestablish it tonight, um, is part of the discussion. Any discussion, any questions or comments, Mr. Smith?
Yeah, so, if, are members of the deed research committee allowed to vote to reestablish the research, deed research committee, or do we need to abstain?
No, I don't think so, I don't think you need to abstain. How many are on?
Myself and Mimi Latrell.
Three votes will do it.
Better safe than sorry, right?
Yeah. Mr. Smith?
Make a motion, we, uh, vote to reestablish the deed research committee.
Most have been made in second, any discussion? All in favor? Good, thank you. Next item on the agenda-
Do you two abstain?
Yes. Uh, vote to dissolve Open Space Design Bylaw Subcommittee. Mr. Smith?
Sorry.
Questions, comments on that?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, uh, that we vote to dissolve the Open Space Design Bylaw Committee. Subcommittee.
Second.
Most have been made in second, any discussion? All in favor? Back to zero, thank you. Next item on the agenda is the master plan update. Is that you, Mrs. Latrell?
I guess it is. It must be. On June the twenty-fourth, um, members, I think, like ten members of the master plan committee, the town planner, um, two representatives from, uh, MAPC, who is, um, our consultant for the beginning portion of, uh, the master plan update, went on a tour of self-growth, um, and in your packet, there's a list of all the places of interest that, uh, we went, um. Went well, hopefully they got a lot of good information, I'll have to reach out to them and see what their takeaway is from, which were, were. And then, we're moving along the other piece in your packet on the goal and theme descriptions, we're working through, uh, these, we, um, got more details on diversity of housing, then we'll work through the other, the other goals and themes. And our next meeting is next week, Wednesday, the seventeenth.
Thank you. Any, any questions or comments?
I'd just like to say Mimi's doing a great job as chairman, and, like, even the selectmen in the room would agree with that.
So, um, the goals and themes, goals, goal themes and descriptions, are you finding that there's, um, a lot of, uh, similarity to the current master plan, or are there, or is it both? Some, some similarity and some new stuff that wasn't in the old master plan?
A lot of similarity, some new stuff, um, the, one of the goals, one of the implementation items of the last master plan is to rewrite the entire zoning code, I don't think that's going to be for this one. But a lot, a lot of similarities.
Oh, that's good. So, um, that means that the current master plan still has value. Any more on the master plan? Next item on the agenda is, uh, planner's report. Planner's report. I'll ask Casey to give us, uh, in the absence of the town planner, a couple of items on the planner's report. the planner's report.
So Karina left a few things that she wanted us to, that she wanted to go over as part of the planner's report. She included an email that she copied you on, back in June, on the 18th, that covered the 5G small cell.
Yeah, it's just an update, because we were aware that, and this was before Casey came on board, that the board of selectmen were working on the 5G, and that the guidance that we received from the consultant was that not to go to the bylaw, but to have a town policy relative to 5G. So, we were pleased to hear that, that it's being worked on, and the town planner, as she does with many things, was, hadn't heard in a while, so she asked for an update, and we received it, and then she showed up with us, and it's basically that the attorney is working with town administrator, Mr. Purple, in preparing the 5G small cell policy for the town. And that's our move. Give you updates as we, as we know. And then... Casey, on the Economic Development Committee?
Yeah, about a month ago, I believe it was actually the same day, yeah, the same week as your last meeting, Claire applied for a grant opportunity from the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, and I believe you're already aware of this grant opportunity for planning assistance, oh, for zoning, for the downtown initiative.
Very good, I understand, I believe you told me that Karina was helping Claire with that, and they did get it in on time, or whatever the timeframe was that they got it in. So that's good to hear.
And just a general announcement, that there is a vacant position on the zoning board of the district.
Did you say there's a vacancy on the zoning board of appeals?
Of appeals, sorry.
Yeah, it says here, Mr. Dennyton chose not to be reappointed, and says additionally, the ZBA already had a vacant alternate member seat. And that might be because Mr. Robbins became permanent.
And there's an update to the Public Safety Building. There has been a delay to the completion of that project to mid-August, on August 13th, and there will be a tour of that building on October 26th.
Great. Anything else? Any questions, comments on that?
I'm just curious, any idea what the delay was?
Do you know, Sam? Public Safety, do we?
Excuse me?
Oh, we're talking about, there was an announcement, I know they had talked about opening day for the Public Safety to be mid-July, now, we have a note here that says it's been moved to August 13th.
Yeah, that's the latest I've heard, is August 13th. And there's a ceremony in October 20th or something like that, the official opening.
Right, that's what you just said.
There was some discussion about things that they needed to get finished before they actually moved in the building, and they decided to give them another couple of weeks to make sure all that stuff was done, so it wouldn't be disruptive when they actually moved in. There was no cost associated with that delay, as I understand it, but that's what they agreed to recent meeting.
Sam, when are the place and the fire going to actually permanently vacate the current facility?
I don't know a specific date, but the moving action is going to happen maybe after, apparently, August 13th or whatever there is, so there will be presumably a brief time when everybody moves, and then, again, I don't know how long that period is, Martin Purple is probably just going to ask that. I mean, we're in no danger of running out of time now, unfortunately, things have been moving quickly. We had two or three years to actually vacate the property after the deal was signed, before we had to start paying extra rent to St. Mark's for the current, so in no danger of winding up having to pay rent for it, as I understand it.
And has St. Mark's pulled any permits to raise the existing structures?
Not as far as I've heard, I kept asking to ask what the plan is for that, and I hear they're still talking about various options, so I've not heard specifically about St. Mark's, but fortunately, probably within nine or ten days, so. Everything seems to be moving on, basically, the paving, the base code paving, which will play a big difference in terms of the look, and complete the trajectory of the base, so it's good progress.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments on that, planner's report? Thank you, Casey.
I have a question.
Oh, sorry.
Not on the planner's, planner's report, but something to follow up on, the 144, 154 Turnpike Road, the, the site plan that they put the cut through. From our minutes, they had a month to get that taken care of, and as of tonight, it looks exactly the same as it's looked, still has the Jersey barriers there.
Yeah, I remember we asked if that's when it would be started, or, and we were told specifically it is to be 100% complete.
Right.
30 days.
Yep.
So is there something Karina can follow up to that?
Right. When the town planner comes back, I'll see if she can give us that as soon. Anything else? Minutes?
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from Monday, June 3rd, 2019, is true?
Second.
Most of them made in second, any discussion? All in favor? Approved, thank you. The next meeting is July 22nd, 2019. That meeting agenda was... Was posted with the town, it'll be reposted, as we do almost for every meeting, add things, subtract things as things move along, and we know at this point in time that the times on that posted agenda will be changed a little bit, so, especially after this first, the second continued hearing, which will start at 7:10. So, that'll be reposted. Mr. Mills?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Most of them made in second, any discussion? Hearing's not all in favor? Go ahead, adjourn.